Now, just some information here. I don't have the microphone there for you guys on yet. If you want to speak from your chair, let me know. I'll turn it on. When I turn it on, it will pick up all sidebar conversations and they'll be recorded forever. So be careful what you say when I turn it on. I'll just tell you that, okay? At least that's what I told anybody. So administratively, this is the exit here. There's one over here if you came in. There is a generator. I don't think we'll need one tonight. If anything does happen, follow Ron out. He'll be out first. Don will be the last one out. So we'll go there. We are going to follow the rules and procedures that we approved earlier this year for running the meeting. So with that, we have a couple of meeting minutes to approve. The July nineteenth meeting minutes, Doug needs to abstain from that one, but the other three of us can vote on there. Anybody have any comments about those minutes? About the motion to approve? Moved by Adrian, signed by Aaron. Any other comments? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Doug abstain. Next one, August second. Aaron has to abstain from this one, but Doug, Adrian and I can do that. Any comments? If somebody to move them? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Both minutes are approved. We're done for that. Legal notices were published into Davie Messenger, if there were any. I don't think there were for this meeting. We will file the order of business that is in the agenda on the table over there. I will say if anyone has not signed in, please sign in so we will know who was here. The clerk for the minutes. Okay, first item up is a continued subdivision TP-0702-23 preliminary three lot re-subdivision public hearing. This is for the follower family trust. Do we have anyone to speak and tell us what's going on since the last time? Okay, yeah. Tell us what's happened since the last time we met, since it's a public hearing.
Last time we met, I think there was a list of things that we had to submit and those events.
Yeah, okay. And so you have made a submission, but it did not make the deadlines for this meeting. So.
That is correct.
Okay, so now I'll turn it over to staff. Ron?
I have no comments.
And?
Oh, yeah, I'll confirm that submission has been received. It has not been reviewed by staff at this point. We still need more time.
Okay, and based on the draft resolution, you will be able to review that in time for a decision of whether we can make the October fourth meeting or not.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Highway?
I'm good.
Engineering?
I have no comments.
Fire? Okay, is this a public hearing? This is a continuation of the of the re-subdivision. We were waiting to get additional information that would allow us to determine the state environmental quality review regulations and make a determination on that. We did not get the information, so we couldn't make any determination to this point. Staff does have updated plans, which are available if anybody wants to see them in the building department. And that, once the staff has reviewed that and determined whether there's enough information in there for us to make a determination of environmental impact, we will then come to the next meeting with that goal of making that determination. Or actually, we can't even do that. We would just have to then be able to turn it over to the county. The county has to review it. When the county sends it back to us, then we can turn around and make a determination. Once we make a secret determination, we can kick it back to the zoning board of appeals, who can then begin their discussion on whether or not to grant the variance. I know that's confusing, but I wanted you to understand the whole process. It's a multi-layered staged process. So those are the things that are going on. So being as this is a public hearing, do I have anyone in the room that would like to speak for or against this application? Anyone in the room like to speak for or against this application? Okay, online. Do I have anyone online that'd like to speak for or against this application? Got Darth Vader up there. How you doing, Tim? Okay, I've got no one to do that, to speak for or against that. So we will continue this public hearing. Right now, it's planned to be continued, let's see, da-da-da-da-da, to the October fourth meeting, correct? Want to make sure I'm on the right? Thank you. So we're continuing to the October fourth, next planning board meeting. So with that, we have a draft resolution, continuation resolution. Do I have a motion to wait the reading and approve the resolution as presented? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Aaron. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Please, I'm in this meeting.
Aye.
Aaron, Adrian Bellis.
Aye.
Aye, okay. We continued that public hearing till the fourth of October, and that's when we'll meet next on this project. Hopefully by then, we'll have enough information to be able to begin the process of turning it over to the county and making some kind of determination on the environmental review. Okay, so well, now we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is a site plan for Chester Brassie on Hawthorne Circle. This has to do with a final site plan for a single-family residence. Who do we have to speak for that one? You want to tell us what's going on? This is a final site plan, so we already did the preliminary. You submitted the finals. Any, you want to say anything before I turn it over to staff?
No, there was a list of changes.
Okay, and you did them all?
Did them all.
All right, that's what I'm talking about. Okay, Ron?
I drafted a resolution with conditions and a hearing that they will be addressed, so we're good to go.
Okay, Dan?
No, I agree with Ron. No anything for the applicant. I do have your preliminaries that were signed, so I can return them to you before you leave.
Thank you.
Highway?
Yep, I'm good on this one.
Engineering?
I have no comments on this one.
Fire? Okay, board. Do the board have any comment? Okay, we do have a final fight, yeah. Final site plan resolution with conditions drafted. Did you get a chance to review this?
No.
Okay, would you like to review this? It's really pretty simple. But go ahead, take a quick look at it and see if you agree with those two conditions. If you say yes, then we can proceed. Okay, the applicant has agreed to the conditions. Do I have a motion to wait the reading and approve the resolution as presented? Moved by Doug, seconded by Adrian. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Is Tim on? Tim online?
Yeah, but he can't, because he can't, oh.
Oh, okay. Doug Neets?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Ed Hennig?
Aye. Okay, you're good. Do those couple of conditions there, get her in, and we'll get her signed. You can move on with the next phase, talk to staff. There's a process that you go through to get your building permit and then go from there. But the staff will tell you how to do that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good day. Okay, next item up under other board action is the final, I just can't speak the name, final letter of credit release for auto wash. App, everything is good, signed, sealed, delivered, everybody agrees?
Yep, good.
Okay, do I have a motion to do the final LOC release for auto wash? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Aaron. Any other comments?
This is just a voice vote, right? Do we, yeah, it's just a voice vote.
All in favor, signal by saying aye? Aye, okay, that's approved. Okay, this is review and recommendations of the Redfield Grove Phase Three incentive zoning amendment. Okay, we got, yeah, tell us a little bit about what's going on there.
I'm Rafael Barreto with Marathon Engineering for presenting this development. I'm joined here on my place. So this development, this is a, what we're showing up here right now is the current Phase Three of the Redfield Grove development project. This was originally developed, this was originally taken on by the town back in 2015. The portion of the development has already been built. Since that time, there's been some changes to the economy and the market that's caused us to revise the original layout that was, etc. So to just run down a couple of the differences in the old layout and the new layout, worth noting that Lot One, on the corner here, the old layout that was going away, now we're going to be keeping it as separate lot. Building in small, five block parking lot area, same. The old development had five smaller buildings. We're going down to four buildings. They're slightly larger and they have attached patio. The old layout had a drive aisle that would run through the rear of the building. We moved the building back of it and eliminated that drive aisle, and that's allowed us to increase the room space buffer between the building and the rear of the lot. As well, it's giving us an increased space. Okay, Tom? We're up from, I believe the old total was 180 parking spaces. Our current total is like 265. And I also like to note that while Lot 71, noted up in the upper right here, is part of this modification of our SBR, actually we're passing, maybe we can change the setback. So that will remain as it was originally proposed. We have, Marathon has received the staff report. There are a couple of comments that were given to us, and I think they're all easily addressable. If you wouldn't mind, if I can just speak on a couple of these before we get to questions?
Certainly, go ahead.
Sure. So, let's see here. Regarding saddles should allow use of onsite parking for Lot One. That is certainly something we are willing to agree to. The only thing that I would like to discuss is just, I want to make sure that whatever, whether it's the parking power or the future uses, I just want to take a look out that there might, some need to expand the parking. I mean, right now, we have five lots up at. I've not entirely certain that we are not, we haven't nailed down what the possible things that I want. Want to come back with the power of that.
Right.
Then the other comments on the next board is we are adding, we're putting down a fence between the rear of the lot and the residential lots. There's a request to reduce existing changes to existing grades at that property line. We're willing to make every attempt to leave that, lessen the amount of grading that we're going to be doing in that area. The only thing that I want to caution is that there's a lot of grade change back there right now. Runs in the back. If we're going to be installing a six-foot fence, I just want to be cautious on what the appearance of that rear fence. We're certainly open to keeping that as undeserved as possible in order to reduce service of the neighborhood property. I think that's something.
In order to, the fence in.
Which level?
Well, we want the fence going up and down.
So we'll get into it.
I agree with that.
So we want to make sure we can keep some grade in that.
Grade enough that you can get that.
We don't want to be, you know, we don't want to be restricted to nowhere.
And the request amenities, we already agreed to add streetlights in the additional bench by Route 96. Five-foot concrete sidewalk connecting to the road to the north. That is something we're ready to agree to. I just wanted to clarify the location of this, of a best pocket park located in the green area. I believe, thinking about that being somewhere over here, if I have that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, right, that's what Ron, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, as long as we.
We talked about that area created when, the triangle area created by that sidewalk?
Yeah.
That would be the best property.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. And then the removal of that driveway that's going here on Lot Five, that'll be all of it. Yeah, I think all of these comments are more than doable.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Or no, Ron, Ron?
No, I've met with Frank and with Matt from Marathon Engineering, and it kind of balances the site out with the park setting on both ends, the south and north end. I do know that people wanting ice cream take the shortest route possible. So why not have sidewalk there so that they don't have to walk on grass or mud or whatever?
Yeah, we got to give Adrian the vote to get a nice.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to say that, no. But it's a good compromise. I think the neighbors to the east will be not wanting to see a high, six-foot high fence on top of a large berm. But on the other hand, they do want to have their privacy back there, so the details are in the design.
And his comments about parking your grade, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
Dan?
I'm good.
Highway?
I'm good.
Engineering?
I'm good as well.
Fire? Okay, anybody seeing as a site plan, so we don't have a public hearing, but board, any comment? Tim or Doug?
No.
Adrian?
We have one. So the house that's staying, the driveway's still coming off of 96 on that one?
Yes.
Somebody that thought it was coming off. The trees that are existing there, you're going to remove a lot of that, take that berm down a little bit to put the fence.
Most trees will have to go.
And then you're going to do the fence, and then new trees on your property.
Right.
And I remember when I see, like, yeah, it shows.
Yeah.
You have a prolonged. And then now we'll put that driveway at the end, little sidewalk punches through from the middle. That driveway's going away?
Yes.
So everybody would come to that building down.
Not here, go left, I'll probably just follow, make a little bit of turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Thank you.
Aaron?
I could have few. Took them from me. So that Lot One? That's residential, right?
No, it's, it's, what is, Lot One?
It's commercial.
It's kind of zoning, I'm sorry. Yes, it's currently zoned with the lot. It's all that, all other stuff. And there's residents and they're rating that. Correct, we're in the process of removing those residents.
Okay.
And once they're, once they're removed, they're going to get that property.
What is? What's the purpose of the fence and getting rid of so many trees? Why not just eat the trees, maybe plant new ones to provide a natural floor? What is your, what is your?
Those trees, those are very old pine trees that are at the top. So if I had to clean out, make it rain, they're a nice fence and you plant this, you look a lot better. So back in the seventies, it was not a bad. That berm was putting in the trees. So I'm over growing and bombing, and I get calls from neighbors, you know, asking me to, you know, treat well down. Can you cut this tree out of my ones because they're like, being swayed in the middle?
And you have on here that it's going to be a wood fence, match what's to the north. What are plans to or?
Well, each lot, each lot, say whoever owns the property.
And then maybe you're started, that's 71. What are you planning with that? Or is that just open?
Currently, it's open. There is, there is a set of site plans that go along with that lot in the old proposal. We're not making any changes. So it's included in this modification, haven't been built yet. And because of this, I assume the original proposal, we aren't actually.
No, no, that subdivision. Couple of the site plans for that.
And the caddio, discovered caddio.
It's not short.
Potential for some outdoor damage space. We did it, we actually.
Yeah.
Similar to that.
Okay. And so in fact, we have, there's four different lots. So this one, the overall plan and the rest of the concept. Yes, I'm sorry, two. The four concepts, some of them are. What are we recommending to the town board? Is it just this one? Are we also looking at the other, the other two concept plans?
It's a, it's a change to the incentive zoning to allow a set of five buildings, four buildings.
And this is overall?
It's overall.
And that's to remove the house?
For what?
It's overall, for two concept plans are basically just poster views.
Right.
Yeah, we're not, concept, we just, concept or just what they are.
Again, all right, go next.
Hey, Adrian?
With that parking, there's five spots at the house now, and you want to do something? Two more maybe left.
I would say no more than seven spots at the most. Is there space for that?
I think we have enough space.
That's what we're looking at, basically, just.
And then we could leave it, we could say that the ability is there, but they can be a land bank or whatever you call it. Stay with five, but he has the option to go to seven, nine, some of that.
Yeah.
Down road.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it fits, I mean, I think that would be a good verbiage, put in there that we would like to see five and land banking it too.
Right, and it's needed depending on the tenure or whatever. That's behind, so he then needs to go and have a safe green view for that thing.
We'll change that verbiage to say that current five plus land banking, two additional in green space. That's always the best way to do it, and then you can sort of, you need to.
Show the design for seven, yeah, and then, you know, we'll just.
You got to get it kind of approved as you're going to zoning, then you don't have to worry about it from the back there, boom, boom, with space. Okay, anything else by anybody? Okay, we have a draft letter to go back to the town board. It has some recommendations. We're going to change that number three to be five land, or five parking spots with land banking, two additional. Does anybody have any problem with me signing this moving forward? Doug?
No.
Adrian?
Nope.
Aaron?
No.
Okay, John gets that change made. I will sign this and move it on to the town board. Thank you very much.
What about the grading?
Does, where does it specific, which one of these talks about the grading?
Number four.
Number four.
Oh, four, I missed it. Requested possible that existing grade located behind portions of the existing and not regreated. How do you want to reword that, Ron?
I would just say that we need to have the ability to grade, you know, we can't just say the existing grade.
I mean, most of that mound is on your land now, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
I mean, there might be a little bit on the back of the properties, but I mean, 95% or more of it is on your land.
Correct.
So I mean.
So just say there that it'll be graded, existing conditions and not regraded with the ability to install a fence.
Correct.
Just add something there. You got that one, John? Okay, all right, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
No problem, thank you. All right, next item up.
Field.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, next item up, field change, hidden treasures. Okay, let's start with, instead of the applicant, let's start with Dan and give us a little fill in and send on what's going on with that one. Then we'll turn to the applicant real quick.
Sure, my staff has been working with the applicant in regards to everything that's going on out there. They have a concern with the fencing that goes around the property. If you remember back, it was required to be a solid fence to be put in here. As we had neighbors that were concerned. You guys were provided a map that shows a couple of different colors. Yellow would be the color where the solid fence is required, and the green is where chain link is required per special use permit. In this approved, signed site plan, it did call for a natural colored vinyl fence that was on the approved plans. The applicant has provided pictures that I've given to the board in packets and.
And some pictures given tonight, right?
Yep, so there's a picture of one that would be the natural tan colored vinyl. They also showed what the white would look against their current facade out there. And then what they would like to do is possibly go to a wooden fence, but that's just the whole thing in a nutshell. I mean, I'm sure the applicant can do a much better job.
I wanted to kind of get kind of where we are with this, because this was submitted as a field change. And you came to me.
Yep.
And I said, bring it to the board. I want to get in trouble with this board any more than I already have been.
So and that's where we're at.
Yeah, exactly.
So I've talked to the applicant. They've provided a whole bunch of information for us, and it's been given to you guys in packet form for tonight for review of this proposed field change.
Okay, now we'll let the applicant fill us in on what they want to say, but.
I just want to get that out first so we understood the process, so thank you to me.
That's perfect. Obviously, we're.
Give us your name and.
Sure.
Address or whatever.
John Watson, and we're speaking on 606 Loomis Road. I live at 36 Pebble Creek Lane with Tom Pittsburgh.
And?
So obviously, we're just trying to be fiscally responsible with this project. When it was first brought to us, obviously, this was approved back in 2021 by a completely different applicant. They decided that they were going to walk away from the project for reasons unknown. But originally, this project was kind of approximated. It was going to cost around $400,000, just a little bit north of that. We're up over $800,000 now. So in terms of just trying to be fiscally responsible, the sand vinyl fence, just material wise, runs around $28,000, whereas if we went with a wooden fence, it would be around $14,000. Runs around twenty-eight thousand dollars, whereas if we went with a wooden fence, uh, it would be around fourteen thousand dollars. The white vinyl fence is kind of the midway point, uh, I have on twenty thousand. Uh, obviously, with the dog-eared wooden fence, we would have a maintenance agreement with that, which our attorney has uh, already said that she could draw up pretty quickly. Um, if it's uh, color wise, you know, we could go with a variety of different stains, whether it be, you know, a lighter color or darker color. If that was something, you know, that the board or neighboring residents wanted, we don't really have a preference for that. I think that is about it, unless you guys have any questions.
What we're gonna do is we'll turn it over to the rest of the staff, get their feedback, talk to the board. And uh, we'll, we, there's a lot of issues going on right now, because there's, there is a um. Special use permit, there's site plan, preliminary and final, there's a variance involved. And all of them have different requirement, well, I didn't say different, but all of them have specific requirements. So, we'll probably uh, discuss that just a little bit, Ron.
No, I. Have no comments.
Okay, and don't, I would probably nothing on that one, engineering, but, okay. So, what we have, well, uh, let me turn to Doug, cause Doug's been doing some digging on some different things with the uh, special use permit rest.
Yeah, I mean, as I was going through, once I saw this was submitted, um, I started looking back through, there was some, you know, um. Different requirement, you know, I guess there are a lot of different requirements, specifically say vinyl. Yeah, so that's, one of the things I would like to is to maybe have staff kind of review the fencing requirements between. ZVA, special use, and then the the site plan, preliminary and final. Just to make sure that we have all eyes dialed these crossed on this to make sure that, um, you know, we have all the information we need to. They go accurate, just, you know, precision on. Lloyd versus vinyl versus, you know, landstating, so I think one point landstating wasn't even out there. You know, back, way back when, on the preliminary approvals. So I, I just, to me, I would like to have to kind of look into that and make sure that we've got everything covered on that.
All right, Aaron.
I don't remember, or maybe somebody else does, if it was the case, but uh. I know a lot of those houses were the south.
We have one of the residents here.
Were there any, at that point, were there any concerns about? That ever brought up?
Definitely. You go, yeah, definitely, that was part of the reason we put it into what we did is because there were. And not only you, but your other neighbor had serious issues with whether or not there was gonna be a six foot high.
Solid.
Solid fence, so that, in, well, I guess what we're debating now is not on whether or not there should be a fence there or not. The question right now is material, basically, I think is really where we're coming down.
Right, so was there any, I don't remember any talk about material back then?
Well, yeah, the answer is yes, and that's kind of why. Like Doug said, we need to have staff go back and look at all of the differences, both the ZVA. The special use permit and the final site plan, or even the preliminary site plan, just look at them all and see if. Everything lines up, because what I would not want to do tonight is to make a decision and approve something or disapprove something. When we don't have all the information of what we had previously approved to make sure that we're on a same sheet of view, so I'm with Doug on. Trying to have, or having staff review all of the pieces and come back to us with a. A little bit of a matrix, uh, here's what was approved, here's what was said, the different pieces, and if there's some error or inconsistencies. Then we'll have to make the decision on where to go from there. I'm sorry, Aaron, I wanted to throw that in, what else you have? Okay, Adrian.
Yeah, I agree with Doug, and I believe that. Well, the rest of the information, I believe, will be this, what we're talking about is vinyl or something, and whether, you know, not wood, so. I guess I don't remember looking at these plans where he's marked the green, yellow, and I don't know what the reds are, but.
Red, sorry, a car garage.
You're a car garage.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. I remember the yellow, like if we're gonna talk yellow right now, going across the back of the properties for full. And going down the side, I don't remember going all the way to the thruway.
Right.
On the, the one side for full, like privacy, I remember going around the corner a bit, maybe to the end of the retention pond or something. It was gonna be chain link down to the, I mean, I, I guess, I'm trying, I don't know, no.
So there, there came off final site plan approval.
This did?
Yes.
Okay.
And all we did was actually highlight it so that you could see it.
Sorry, must be what you talked about, okay. I just don't remember that, I thought it would be. This is all a field way back there, next to thruway of the one neighbors and. We got it around the corner, so headlights didn't shoot the back of his house, but I don't, I, but obviously, maybe that changed at the end, I don't remember. And I remember the chain link across the back, back and up by the gate. I mean, I'm just worried the wood is gonna buckle rod or, like something gonna happen or way faster than the vinyl. I feel like the cost is not, well, what's the thirty-six thousand dollar one?
That, uh, that is eight foot sections rather than six foot sections, so it's, it's really the same color as the six foot, it's just. In eight foot sections, we thought it might be a little more cost effective if uh, it was an eight foot section, but obviously, that's not the case. And, yeah, I mean, I guess we'd need more information before I could say, but, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not. I mean, cost wise, I understand you're older.
Okay, so, let me summarize where we're at, I think we're all in agreement that we want to pass the staff. To go back and look at the fencing requirements for this project from both the zoning, border appeals, the special use permit, and the preliminary final site plan. And then come back to us with a summary of what you found, and what types of materials you found. And if there's any discrepancies, then we can make a decision at that point, does that make sense? So at our next meeting, assuming staff can get it done, we'll be able to have that information. I would like you to provide that information also to the applicant so that they know what was approved. It was before your time, but at least you'll know what we approved, uh, approved, and then we'll go forward from that.
And that meeting was, was when exactly?
Or it may be September twentieth is the next meeting? Yeah, September.
We'll uh, we'll send all that information out in your packets, which we gave before, or we could expect that as well, week before. Uh, for everybody to be able to.
And, and since, make sure it's posted or whatever, so that the residents can see it too, because I know you're obviously concerned, you wouldn't be here tonight.
Well, I, I mean, if there are concerns, would it be appropriate for her to voice them so that we could hear them and maybe we could?
Well, certainly we can, I mean, it sounds complicated, but I, I wanted her to at least know what's going on, and you go ahead and tell us what you're thinking, Aaron, once you remember how the process, so.
Well, it's, it's really important that my, you're supposed to have the final fence all the way across my backyard. Okay, the neighbor's yard, and then all the way down to the road.
Yeah, so, uh, that, that hasn't deviated whatsoever, we're still planning on having that, the exact uh, privacy fence. Except for instead of vinyl, it would be a wooden fence, and it would be stained every year. Did you, you want to look at this?
Yeah, there's, there's pictures of it. Yeah, there would be a maintenance agreement, whatever, whatever, that's part of what we have to weigh, it's the way.
Oh, no.
But that's, but that's what, so you see what they wanna do, they wanna go to the, yeah, big style like that versus the vinyl.
Right, I can't, I can't, wooden stuff, it's that soon, it's, you know, it's very problematic.
And also, I'm, I'm gonna say, just like I've been said, that your letter here to us, um, that was on the front of us, this packet. With all these other storage facilities having other fences, um. I get what you're telling us here, but also the neighbors aren't right in the backyard, you know what I mean, so. It's a little, they're sitting there on some of these, so. But they are, I mean, they are in very, very close proximity, in, in the, the one on ninety-six, there's a house on either side of the facility. You know, with the one. Okay, and, and they, and they have a black layer fence, and then the one on.
We got the information, we're not gonna argue about it. So, I appreciate the information, we appreciate it, appreciate Adrian's comment, so we'll just kind of leave it there. Okay, anything else? Okay, staff has their task and we'll go from there, so at the next meeting, we should have that information, okay? Thank you very much. We gotta go to partial letter of credit release for GLM, okay? Who wants to start this one? John, I know what you want, I think everybody knows you want some money back from your letter of credit, um, for things that have been completed. Um, so, I mean, there's not much more to say than that, I mean, you sent it to us, so let's go to staff and see what's going on.
All right, I'll take.
Okay.
Uh, this one came to staff and followed normal procedures, we've gone up, done some inspections, staff. Department has have all looked at this, and we're not fully in all agreements on this, so when that happens. Procedurally, come back to planning board.
Right.
Uh, to try to give staff some direction, that's where we're at right now, a memo was drafted up on Friday last week. Just stating that situation, it's, doesn't happen very often.
I can't ever remember that.
Uh, but there, there's definitely some concern from staff, and again. This board makes a recommendation to town board, so we're looking, staff is looking for direction from this board.
Okay. John, you know there's a bunch of things going on, we know your project's been on hold.
What I, what I guess I could maybe help everybody, do we know what the list of concerns of the letter of credit are? Or is it just concerns?
I think there's not so much on the letter of credit, but the, on the project.
The project in general.
Is where the concerns are from staff.
Cause I believe you stated the project was on hold at your C meeting, but we didn't know any difference of the project on hold, right? Has it ever come off the hold?
We're, we're, then, we're, we are still actively working to market the project and. Still out there beating the bushes trying to find a deal that I can bring to make sense on the land, I'm not with a broker on Thursday of last week. Specifically talk about the project.
The project itself has been, I mean, even on the final site point here, this was brought to my attention. It says that uh, should the topsoil pile remain greater than a year, certainly has. Then it shall be graded so that it can be mowed and maintained to a height no greater than six inches. Well, that certainly hasn't happened.
I was, uh, actually, funny you should say that, cause I drove through here. One of the confidence means to get the silk fence fixed, I got that fixed la- end of last week. When I, I drove through to make sure it actually got done, and uh, I myself worked with the grass, I wanna get the grass mowed, I, I have no problem.
What about the topsoil pile?
Uh, the topsoil pile is, is put up in a way that I can mow it all the way to the top.
That's not the point, it says here it's gotta be graded out. So like everything can be mowed, graded out, it's, it doesn't say it can be stepped, kept as a pile. That's on the final site plan that you submitted with the comments and we all signed. So I, I, there are some issues, certainly there are some issues of whether or not things have been, are at a point. Where they could be accepted, um, I don't think any of the infrastructure has been tested in any way, shape, or fashion.
And we have not, uh, I, I don't know all of this stuff, I don't have, our engineers, my engineers are not able to come, but um. Talking to Peter earlier today, I don't think he submitted for any of the testing.
Well, I understand that, but. I certainly, if I had a house, and you put something in, and I'm gonna accept it and give you some money back, and it hasn't ever been tested. And. Why would I give you any money back till I knew it was tested, but that's a town issue, the town does what they gotta do.
I think that's why there's a specific line.
Well, I understand it might be a specific line, but, but.
And there's also retained being withheld on the letter.
Well, I think that those are the kind of questions. That has got the staff in about six different conditions of where they think that they should agree to. Giving you some relief on some of your funds for installing certain things. Uh, the project's been on hold. The project has seen no activity in many, many months. Grass still isn't mowed, topsoil pile has been moved, well, you're now working on silk fence, but it's, and it's, to be honest between us. It's a friggin' eyesore. We get people asking us all the time, what's going on with that eyesore project? And I know you said, eh, yeah, we'll put some towels on it or whatever, I understand, where you have said in the past about this project. But I think this town needs to go through, we need to turn it back over to staff, let staff review it again, get to some point, talk to you and your team. And see if we can come to some agreement of what we can do, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not here to tell you, I ain't. Got anybody on this board that's willing to go ahead and say, yeah, go ahead, give him his money back right now.
And I'm, I'm, I'm happy to sit down and review, you know, I got a note on Sunday morning to show up today, and I'm. Here, cause I was asked to chill today, and I'm, I'm totally fine, I, I'll work through whatever comments that you have. I'd just like to see what the comments are to, you know, we'll trust, we'll ask them exactly why you should be working with staff. And staff will be able to make that determination.
To this point, I, I, I would have tried to address it before the planning board, maybe, I wanted to give it any comments before. So, where are we at on this one?
Well, it sounds to me like what you want is to have staff meet with the GLM team. And go through the items identified for release, and come to some consensus on what needs to be done. Need to be inspected and tested, that's one thing, if the dollar amounts, and, and God knows. We're dealing with dollar amounts that were uh, done a number of years ago now, and.
Right.
Um, there are things there that. Probably you can't buy today for that.
That's probably true. Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's really the thing, I think the board wants staff to work with you, and there hasn't been a whole lot of communication. So just recently, I believe, other than the request. We just like you guys to work it out and see what you come to, usually, like I said, staff will come to some kind of consensus. And then come to us, and we just go ahead and say, okay, town board, go ahead and we recommend, our board has to do the approval. If this is an okay letter critically, but you'll work with staff?
Uh, I, I just have a question, because you, you brought up site.
Oh, there's some huge site issues.
I mean, we work with John, and I don't have a problem with that, and get to a conclusion, is this board gonna allow, go forward with site conditions? The way they are.
I'll let, I'll, I'll let the three of these guys answer before I do, cause I could do it all the time.
The maintenance of the site, I think, is a, for me, is a big one, I think, is having it unmoed and, and looking like it's just, you know. Gone completely vacant, nothing's happening, I think, me, if it's maintained. You know, and if we have to, you know, grant an extension, maybe for the topsoil pile, uh, you know. Say another six months or a year or something while you're working, you know, if you're actively working on marketing it and trying to get someone to come in, I mean, that's. That's great news, I mean, so, yeah, I could maybe see something like that where we would maybe possibly.
It's good, no, I'm, we're trying to broaden our horizons here, right, cause, you know, we've got industry challenges. You're trying to go outside of. Maybe the normal thought process of who we're trying to market to, that was the specific broker we had in last week.
Right.
But, and I think that's a good progress, I mean, so to me, it's something moving forward, something like having that topsoil pile rated out, I mean. Yeah, we, we could give an extension, but I mean, having it maintained though, uh, you know, as a, as a regular mow site.
Gladly get it more than we would next, give me till next week, just so that things frustrate in the end of this.
Yeah, but, but that's maybe get it my way, playing it up and making it look like you're, you're trying to keep it rest, obviously, yeah, things change, industry change. The whole, you know, retail business. You know, there, there's a lot of stuff that's changed, and, and something like that, I think, if we see progress, at least if I see progress out there, I think. Right, some of these, these details like that, you know, but I'm not gonna just say. Years, it stays like.
No, absolutely.
We'll give you a little bit more time, I think we'll. At least I, I feel like.
Okay, Aaron?
Uh, I'm basically gonna say the same thing, just, I, I need to see something happen. Um, I'm sick of, you know, wondering, talking about it, you know, what's going on, a bunch of my town. Um, I understand you're trying to. When you were saying broaden, broaden, I, I need. My town to look better. So, if I see something happening. Topsoil pile, mowing. And. I think we can, we can move on.
Adrian?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with most of that for the maintenance of the property, um, my biggest concerns is the infrastructure that's already there. You know, if it's not tested and something happens and the project goes dead, it's somebody passes away and. There's no way to finish here on what's going on. Um, so my concern is making sure that, that the piping stuff is somewhat tested, ready to go or something. That part's done or something to do something, um. Don't know what kind of road there is for access to any of those lines that there was ever probably not, but. I'm concerned a little bit about that stuff. Oh, real quick, is that only halfway for the pipe?
Only at loop, right?
Only at.
Uh, the water main is all the way to install. Water main is a full loop all the way to outflow, the, the water main, it tees at the, at the end, so it goes down, it tees before the road, it's, there's, there's a.
Into existing?
Um, not into, no, not into existing, it's a dead end.
Close to dead end line or anything like that, but it could go into.
Well, a, as he built out his phases, it does.
It can, yeah, it continues down to the south from.
So it's into where the phase one, I guess, of the project.
Correct, right.
Down that hall, down that like lane way of trees that.
The sanitary is what got installed all the way down, it's center got tied in back on versier.
I mean, so, yeah, so I'm just. I'm concerned about what's pre-existing right now and grounded for the, not being tested or not. Brand or something, or the way to get to it, it goes, uh, full paved road, it's, uh, it's gravel. On a driveway to get to us that. And then from there to nine, then what would happen? Wait for department heads to see how this, I mean, without, very. A lot of them giving us a, that it was. In line at a lot of these, but it's time to. See some maintenance, I wanna see what else going.
Yeah, and I'll say your micros are the same as theirs, I wanna see some ma- some movement on the project. Mowing topsoil or the topsoil pile moved or whatever, or something, that type of progress, but I am very concerned. And I want staff to take a very good look at infrastructure that might have been installed two years ago. And hasn't anything done with it, is it still going to be theoretically or be okay, but since it hasn't been used, is it? Still usable, which I assume it is. It, it hasn't been the same thing, if we put something new in today, but. Uh, sewer wise, I'd love to see you turn around and test that damn thing and get it operational, it goes all the way through and get it functioning. You know what I'm saying, um, water, it can do much with that, you know, it is what it is, until you get somebody in there, but. Uh, I mean. Yeah, we'd like to see some movement, at least in the mowing and maybe the topsoil pile. Uh, and then work with staff and they'll, they'll come to some kind of agreement and I don't think anytime they come to an agreement, have we ever not said. Uh, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Okay?
I'd rather you mute one of her.
Good, alright, so I think staff has their, um, their feedback, okay? Next item up, local law seven of twenty-three, thank you, John.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, Ron, so listen on what we're doing here and why we're doing it now.
Well, because earlier this year.
Yeah.
You had looked at the draft.
Yeah.
And, uh, never took any formal action to accept it.
Okay.
And that's what's before you tonight, because. This is part of a package of six different local laws going to the town board next Tuesday.
Okay.
And, uh, since I've not heard any. Uh. Feedback from anybody, I would assume that what you saw recently in your packets is ready to vote.
No, I know Tim sent an email over at six o'clock.
Did you read his email? It said basically questioning things.
Yeah.
And the bottom, the last thing on his question was none of these are stop, showstopper.
Yep.
Correct. Yeah, it's wording that's to be changed.
No, there's no wording to be changed.
There were questions and I.
Yeah, there were questions about whether there's an alternate member and I don't think that, that's a town board issue, whether they appoint an alternate member.
Right.
Whether or not the town board puts some liaison. Okay, that's a town board issue. Submitting articles to the newsletter, we've always been able to do that, we just had, I just had personally chose not to do that, didn't think there was anything really. Ron submits a, a very good summary of what's going on, as well as Dan does. In the newsletter, so I didn't feel it was needed that we submit something on that. Um, if the supervisor wants me to submit something, I'll try to draft something up. Uh, those are the three questions and two of them are town board issues, not ours, and the other one is just if supervisor wants me to do it, I'll do it, so. With that, there's, uh, Tim doesn't have any showstoppers, he supports the adoption. Yep, no, I appreciate that, I had it right here. And, um, so with that, you're looking for us, uh. To do, was there something for me to sign to send to the, no, so we'll just make a, uh, motion to. Uh, send back or just a comment in the minutes that we agree with the proposed law. Um, number. Seven of twenty-three, uh, about planning board duties and responsibilities, so we'll send that back to the town board, put that in a minute. We all agree, I say soon, we all agree? We all agree, all agree, okay.
Thank you.
You got it, okay, next item up, open discussion and Ron.
Well, I don't wanna step on Dan's toes. He, he knows.
Why and start now?
He knows things that I hadn't even heard about yet. But, uh, there, there is activities going on. Um, we are in the process of adopting six local laws.
Right.
This month. There's, uh, five, uh, letters of credit security releases. That. Were previously approved. By the pl- planning board and tonight approval. Um. We have a, um, start on updating chapters of the town code. Which we have sent. The town engineer and, and to town staff to review and getting their input. To alleviate some of the variances that. Are really not necessary.
Right.
Um, and then the other thing is, we're going to be starting this fall. The, uh, update of the Parks and Rec master plan. And I've been instructed to reach out to Sue Charlene to, uh. Talk about doing a survey like we did for the confidence plan. So hopefully this time around with Susan, we won't have COVID again.
She said, don't kick off COVID just because we're having a project ambition. Anything else?
Uh, there is an upcoming meeting of county planning to talk about the hazard mitigation plan. And, uh. I don't think they want me to go to that meeting.
No way.
No. It's been twenty years and they haven't done anything yet, so what makes you think they're gonna do anything now?
And you're gonna have a concept for the, uh, AP plumbing site there with the next.
Yeah, we did meet with the, um, uh, not with AP plumbing, but we didn't meet with the.
Development.
Former water park.
Okay.
And they've got a revised drawing, revised concepts. There was discussion about showing a private road versus a town road.
Oh, yeah. Uh. I remember that conversation.
Yep. And so.
They were bringing people's driveways out onto a town road. Tim likes that one.
They, they're gonna redesign that.
Yeah, I think.
And, uh, I think the consensus at that meeting was that. It should be a town road that connects between two town roads. Uh, cause in the future, it could come back to bite you that they wanna dedicate that to the town and. You know.
Yep.
So you gotta deal with that issue of reality. Other than that, um. I think I've hit everything, I, I'll leave the projects to you.
Alright, Dan, alright, I'll start with, uh, PRC is tomorrow. We do have the two other concepts that Ron didn't talk about, the one being the solar project over on commercial.
Yep.
And, uh, they are actively trying to move that project forward.
That one's not going to require re- or, okay, it's require rezoning, right?
They, they, they're gonna move it in their regular zoning, so, uh, that will come to you guys right off the bat. They're looking for a special use permit. Uh, and then site plan.
Yep.
Uh, but they're gonna come to PRC tomorrow for their final concept review before they submit and they're attempting to be on for you guys in October.
Okay.
Um, the other concept is the A, AMP plumbing site, uh, between three thirty-two and Beaver Creek. Uh, that's on for discussion tomorrow as well. And then obviously all of our other projects are on, uh, for during that meeting.
Make sure on that one that Jim has some input of whether or not you build the traffic circle with a detention found in the middle of it. Uh, probably not a really good idea.
No, the concept of a car wash is not that.
But Tim, Tim said if we could add like seven or eight traffic circles, he would really appreciate it, so. Uh, that'll kill the project there, they're like too many hours to be something that goes. So, a couple of other things real quick, um, I was working with the chairman. The electric car corner did reach out to me for a field change that Ed has approved. This has to go with the transformer location out front. Uh, RGNE went to do a site visit and where this board approved the pad to be put. RGNE said they would not put the transformer there. So it did have to be adjusted a few feet, I believe, to the one to the right and a few feet back. You, we, because Ed approved it. So.
Yeah, they moved it, but I mean, they built the pad and it looks like it's all very weightful.
Right, well, they had to.
It was built out of within plan, but RGNE required.
Right.
Yeah, it's pretty darn.
It, it is, it's just a couple of feet. And so I talked to Ed about it, this is the requirement of RGNE, they won't put it anyplace else, so we felt that. We didn't have much say, we didn't want to hold up the project.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, but it's in a, a spot now that RGNE will approve it, uh, they are still working on the project out there. I think if you drive by, you'll see that they've already installed their light pole bases and, uh, they're moving along, so. Yep. So, uh, but I, as we talked at your last meeting, we're gonna bring up all the field changes. Um, this one, like I said, Ed and I worked through it fairly quickly and turned it around so they could keep the project moving. Uh, the only other thing I got to report is at your next meeting, you have a three lot subdivision. And now you just added on the field change for hidden treasures to come back to that meeting as well.
Three lot subdivision, the one in corner of.
Pain.
Pain and ninety-six, they're the worst. Or, yeah, the signs there, they're breaking that in the free lot.
So, right, right now it's two lots, the one lot, it's like a U shape around the middle lot. So they're just gonna make them true lots, so it's gonna be one, two and three lots, it's a, it's a pretty. It was almost able to be a lot line adjustment, but because we were going from two to three. We, they had to come to you guys for the subdivision. That's all I have.
Okay, Tim.
Uh, well, it's been a while since we've been together, I think you know. Seen Klein Brownsville Road's done, it's been open, uh. Had a net Santa Costo did a great job, it was very fast. Um, we're very happy with them. Uh, we hope they get some future projects in town. Uh, other than that, we've been working on gutters and catch basins and. Trying to fix up Farmbrook a little bit.
There you go. Alright, uh, Leon.
There really isn't much to report from my end, I did deliver updates to the town on the site design and development criteria. Manual, as you guys know, we've been working on that as we typically are every year. Um, but some of these updates are in regards to inspections, uh, we had some water and, uh. Sewer details that we've been working on, which we've identified before, and some dedication requirements. But at this point, it's going through town review and then hopefully we're hitting, or then in the year in adoption, so that the updated manual will be. In effect before then in the year.
Okay. Don, fire.
Yeah, I've had vacation for about a month, so I haven't been on a lot of these calls. But we've been getting the normal, uh, automatic alarms, uh, doing the nuisance flyers.
Yep.
People in the backyard and the ever ongoing car crash.
That's a problem. Okay, from my standpoint, I continue to work with staff, if they have any issues coming up, uh, I'll come in, we'll do a meeting and. Standard business, the way we've been doing business all along. Public comments, public, have any other comments?
Uh, I don't know if we can kinda go back, we, we had a pretty constructive, uh, discussion with Charlene outside of ways her concerns to us.
Okay.
Um, we talked about maybe a compromise of a white vinyl fence, which she seemed more than happy with. If it's an easier pill to swallow for everybody, we would be more than happy to move the white vinyl fence, obviously you guys still have to vote on it, we understand that. But if it's easier for the, the residents to swallow and if you go back to the board. That, uh, you know. We'd be happy to put.
Let's find out what the staff said.
But I would have no problem with white vinyl. How about you, Gary? How about you, Adrian?
No problem, Doug, no problem. I don't think we would have any, neighbors are the ones that ask for the fence to start with, so, so, well, we'll let staff do it. Make sure there aren't anything else hidden there that we didn't know.
Alright, so the question is, do, if we don't find anything in research? That still allows for a vinyl fence be up? Does it need to come back to you or, or is that okay?
It's gonna be a white vinyl fence, I think you can go ahead and do a field change, or when they don't even need a field change, just go forward. Right? No, if it's white vinyl, they can. We, yeah, field change for the color, I'll approve the field change for the color right now, if it, if that's what it takes. Do a little research, make sure we're not missing anything.
Like I said, I, I wanna believe also in, not saying it's not safe, like, I don't remember the vinyl fence going all the way down. Maybe it was on the final, we didn't.
Well, I'll take a look at that as well.
Yeah.
I remember going, I feel like halfway down and then chained down to the corner, chained, chained back to the gate, which is to get it past all of the neighbors, but. It's supposed to be there, it's gotta go to the corner, it's gotta go to the.
So. I do know the, in resolution, it said a natural color. If you guys classify white as a natural color, then.
Dan, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, the one form said neutral.
Neutral color, sorry.
Neutral or natural?
No, you're, it's neutral.
Okay. Cause I think.
Okay, we'll, we'll still. And but, I, I think right now we can vote this, as if it's gonna be white, we can all agree to it, and I can approve the field change if it's required. White vinyl. Oh.
Can you hear from you guys or?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, wait till, Dan, Dan will do whatever he's gotta do, and if it's white vinyl, he'll tell you to go ahead and go forth, I've already approved the field change to white, if that's what's required. And we'll go for it, as long as it's vinyl.
That's what it is, if I know Friday, I don't know if I wanna complain with it, this Friday or Monday. Can you just blow us all an email pass that day and just tell us what happened?
You, you, I, if I'm not mistaken, you tonight said you wanted this on your agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, but.
And you wanted a report from staff.
But.
On all this, not.
Yeah.
That's what the public heard.
Yep.
Okay? Don't be changing things.
Listen, we can, we can always wait till the twentieth, that's, that's time of us. We'll be back in the twentieth.
There you go, wait till the twentieth. Ron's our keeper of. Making sure we don't end up in court. Hey. Alright, you just don't have to put as much work into it.
Well, that, that goes without saying, you know.
Alright, uh, anything else anybody have?
Uh, I might have to hear on the.
Tim, you gonna be here on the twentieth?
Uh, yes, I will be.
Perfect, you guys both gonna be on the twentieth? Alright, we're good, we got it for him. Okay, motion to adjourned by Doug, seconded by Adrian, all in favor, uh, thanks for, uh, checking in there, Darth Vader.
Well, I wanted to stay current with the issues and, uh, I always look forward to the inspiring updates by Ed.
Yeah, it's inspiring, alright, okay, we're adjourned, thank you, have a good one.
See ya.